All right, the board is reassembled and I do need to take a motion to adjourn our special board meeting that we just concluded. I have a motion please.
I'll move ahead.
Motion from Mark.
Support.
Second from Nick. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Special meeting adjourned. All right, now, I would like to call the Hudsonville Public Schools Board of Education regular meeting for September 12th to order. Apologize we're getting started a few minutes late, but we will start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if I can have approval of our agenda, motion to approve.
I'll move ahead.
Motion from Nick, second.
Support.
Support from Dawn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposing say no. First up is our teaching and learning feature.
We would like to introduce a staff that's going to talk about summer learning. So I don't know who's starting. I'll let you pick it out.
We're a united front.
Well, thank you for having us. I'm Lindsay Bullhaus. I'm the state and federal program coordinator for the district. And we've got a whole team of people that worked on summer learning this year, so I'll let them introduce themselves and then we'll get started.
I'm Craig Steenstrom, Instructional Technology Director.
Kathy Lewandowski, MBSF Coordinator.
You need a more multilingual district facilitator, teacher stopper, special education.
Is that okay? All right.
There you go.
All right, well, we're going to talk about our summer learning program. We did the same presentation last year for you all and we made some changes and some additions to our programming, so we're really excited to share with you what we had going on. So the first program we're going to talk about is Eagle Camp and also talk about some other programming that we had. So we had Eagle Camp. Within Eagle Camp this year, we had a general session, an exceptional learner session, multilingual learners. We also had Jump Start for incoming freshmen. We had Summer SOR available to all Hudsonville students and credit recovery. So Eagle Camp, we had at Georgetown Elementary this year. Thank you to Georgetown for letting us take over the entire school. We had every classroom filled. It was pretty awesome. We had two sessions. Each of them were two weeks long and students were in session from eight until noon. You can see enrollment information there. Worked out to be exactly the same amount of students in each session. For staffing, we had between one and two administrators on site each day. One lead teacher and four to five tutors in every general classroom. The tutors were all certified teachers. In the exceptional learner and multilingual learner program, we had a lead teacher and paraprofessionals in each classroom. And we also had PBIS specialists on site to help problem solve around social issues and behavior. And it was pretty awesome having them with us. Transportation, we provided transportation to and from Eagle Camp each day. We had a hot breakfast for kids every morning when they came in, which for some kids was their favorite part of the day. They were like, oh, it's French toast day or, oh, it's, you know, breakfast burrito day. And then they had the opportunity to take home a packed lunch with them. We partnered with the Outdoor Discovery Center this year and were able to give kids enrichment activities within their daily schedule and also on the last day of summer camp. We had them come and they brought birds of prey and other animals that kids got to interact with and they loved that. That was a really cool part of it. So in our general session, kids started out with breakfast, like I said, and then they moved into a whole group literacy lesson and that was through a program called Scholastic Lit Camp. And then they moved into tutoring rotations. So they had two individual tutoring sessions with either one-on-one or a small group. And then they ended their day with an outdoor discovery center and then they were dismissed at noon. So Kathy is going to talk a little bit about what that tutoring looked like.
So in preparation for those targeted tutoring groups, we really studied the diagnostic testing of the students in the spring and then matched them with liked skills to be placed in these tutoring groups and the MTSS academic specialist team helped with that. And then in those interventions, we were able to target phonics, multi-seleptic word reading, comprehension, fluency, morphology, vocabulary, and prerequisite math standards. So as we were considering how we might measure the impact on achievement of our summer learning program, we were a little bit stuck because we only had the kids for eight days and we didn't want to spend that time in assessments. And so we thought it might be interesting to study our summer slide data. We all know our kids lose skills and they lose knowledge over the summer from being away from us for so long. So we thought we'd take a peek at that. So I have used the STAR scale score averages to make this comparison. And then I looked at all of the students from first grade through eighth grade in comparison to those students who participated in the reading tutoring groups in summer learning. So for reading, we actually, as a district, first grade through eighth grade, we didn't lose anything this summer, which is really incredible. And then I want to say that the summer learning reading students, however, they had a summer of heights, which is something we generally don't see with the students who have these needs. However, the math data doesn't look as great. So we have a summer slide in math. So, and a very similar summer slide from all of our students to those students who participated in the summer program. However, I do need to say that in our schedule of summer learning, only one half hour is dedicated to math, which probably as we consider this in future programming, how might we spend some more time with math as well? You're up.
Yeah, I'm going to talk a little bit about our exceptional learner session. So our priorities were to provide students with learning continuity over the summer months so that when fall came, they could hit the ground running with their learning. And we wanted to offer experiential learning opportunities and maybe some play-based learning as appropriate, keep adult-to-student ratios low, and keep students with their same age or same grade peers or within a grade band. The instructional design was a little bit more flexible than a traditional school day and some community-based learning opportunities were embedded. So there was some fishing. Some of our groups did budgeting and shopping at some local Hudsonville businesses. There was swimming. And in all of the classrooms, there was a strength-based focus and it was really driven by student interest. So in some groups, pirates were of high interest and the lessons were highly pirate and in others, music and movement. So that, it was just really cool. The activities, there were some that were specific to our exceptional learners. We offered adapted art twice a week and many of our special education teachers opted to teach a physical education class or activity throughout the week. And our students participated in all of the other activities that the general session offered, including library and outdoor discovery. Here are just a few additional details. We had 14 total groups and a range of three to six students in each group. And students that participated in our CI or ASD programs were offered both sessions in June and July. And our students that participate in resource or EI programming were offered one session.
And I'm going to share a little more about the multilingual learners' summer camp. So our priority was to help our students with English learning continuity over the summer months. Many of them go home to homes that they don't hear English for three months. And so to help them have that continued exposure is a big priority for us. We also wanted to keep our adult-to-student ratios low and then group students with similar oral language proficiency and/or grade peers. Many times when students don't have a lot of English, they're more comfortable being with other students in that same oral language proficiency, even if they're a year or two younger. We focused on real-life experiences to build background knowledge and had a national park theme. Our students had opportunities to practice oral language and then reading and/or math intervention. They also participated in the same outdoor discovery center activities and library checkout, things like that. So you can see their daily schedule over to the side there. They had heavy emphasis on vocabulary, writing, and phonics. And then I asked some of the students who participated for some feedback. This particular student is new to Hudsonville this fall. She was from South Korea and had been in Troy for the last year. And she said, I feel more comfortable coming to my new school after participating in summer school because I had a chance to practice English and meet some new friends. And then this other student, we had an eighth grader who moved two weeks prior. So in the middle of June, she came to Michigan from Mexico. And a fourth grade student was eating breakfast with her. She said, I met a girl on the first day. I told her I liked her sweater. She told me she didn't speak English, so we started to be friends. I loved speaking Spanish with her and helping her learn English. It felt good to be able to use the Spanish and English I know to help her. So not only did they have an opportunity to increase their reading and their vocabulary, but just to really focus on that oral language and make some good peer connections, which was neat.
All right. We had a lot of programming this summer, so hopefully you're keeping up with us here. The Jump Start, I didn't go into greater details because this is a repeat from last year, but just wanted to give you an update. This is for incoming ninth graders who are identified in eighth grade as potentially being at risk and in need of a boost in their freshman year. So they attended and Andrea Twig and Amanda Eaton provided some lessons around ELA and math and also did things like walk through their schedules and introduce them to clubs and things at the high school. The second bullet point, the people, the students who attended last year had a 95% passing rate in their classes. So we can't say it's because of Jump Start, but we think that that's an indication that it's working pretty well and hope to continue it. This year, we had 17 students attend and Andrea Twig and counselors are going to continue to support them through the year. The high school credit recovery, this is for students who miss credits throughout the year. So similar structure as past years where it's virtual and we host in-person labs for them to come in. We had 52 students engage to do anything at all. And of, out of all those students, 46 credits were earned. So a pretty high amount for the number of students who actually did stuff. There were 18 students who never responded. So we still see room for improvement and continue to try to refine our processes and get it done too for next year. One more.
One more program to talk about. So some feedback we got from community members last year was that people wanted more options for their kids who maybe weren't targeted or invited for the summer program through Eagle Camp or through Jump Start. So Craig and I kind of brainstormed and came up with a program called Summer SOR. This was available to all Hudsonville students K-12 and Craig's going to talk a little bit about the details of that. But it went really well. We're excited to share it with you.
Yeah, so just basic structure, we had math and ELA online lessons for elementary through one program and then a separate program for secondary. And then an exploratory lesson each week for things like visit all the parks and vote on which one is best and extra credit if you contact the parks department with suggestions, things like that. So every week, we hosted in-person times at Riley and Baldwin where people who completed their week could get a free book, a piece of candy, and then we raffled off bigger prizes for everybody who submitted that form. So that was an incentive that we found kept people coming back. In terms of participation, we had about 800 people complete that weekly form. It was filled out 800 times. 300 unique participants, so not as many people filling that out as we would have liked, but a lot of people very active in it. And parents were very appreciative. All the feedback we got was highly positive. And again, we hope to continue this and find ways to improve.
Yeah. So that's it. What questions do you have? We'd be happy to answer any.
I have a couple of questions. The first one is, how was the staff and I mean, did you have a lot of teachers who wanted to participate? Did you have to cut some off or how did that work out?
Yeah, I can speak to that a little bit. For the general programming, we had more teachers apply than we had spots for, which really speaks to this community of teachers. We prioritize people who were certified, so that helped us sort of build a workforce that, of people who were certified teachers. But we did have some paraprofessionals as well who were certified. And yeah, it just speaks highly to our teachers here.
And then the second question, you and Amy I think mentioned a little girl from South Korea who was at Troy last year. How did we connect with her? Was that by chance or?
Yeah, so when they enroll, I get an alert. And so in reaching out, oftentimes they want to know what summer programming is available if they've moved from another district and can't participate. And so in this case, we were able to offer that.
Good. Thank you very much.
Did you know that the Fury Baker Library also had a camping theme or was that coordinated with you guys?
I, it was a coincidence. Yeah, so.
Yeah, it's coordinating with the library.
Yeah, we, the Scholastic Lit Camp that we, the curriculum that we purchased to use last summer has a camping theme. So that's where that was born from, but it's a good theme.
It worked out great?
Yeah, it did.
Maybe it's in here and I'm not seeing it and you guys probably talked about it somewhere, but the numbers this year across all the programs in the presentation, this year versus last, we were up, stable, down some?
Yeah, I can speak to that a little bit. So in the general session, we were just about even from last summer. However, because we added our exceptional learners, our English language learners, we had more students.
And then related to that, I remember last year we talked about, and we were maturing, we were continuing to evolve at the time, but it was kind of a, sort of an informal referral from teachers and principals and so forth to our summer program. Did I get that right? Is that clear?
Yeah, so for the students that were in the general program, they had to be, it was grant-funded, so they had to qualify according to the LOVNT grant. And so they, we did go academic specialist, teachers, and recommended those kids who have those qualifiers for our programming. And then.
And kind of the same, like same process this year, same approach?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
Maybe related to that a little bit, Craig, one of your slides, you talked about the high schoolers making up credits. There's like 18 students that didn't respond. How does that relate to previous year? Are we getting better at that or getting more involvement or?
This year, we had higher levels of engagement. We were trying to work on different methods for contacting, reaching out, calling, texting, whatever ways we can, short of going to their doors, really.
Can we do that?
I mean, as we discussed, we haven't taken that step yet. But one of the things we hope to do next year is have a mandatory orientation like during one of the last seminars and say, hey, if you don't pass your third try class, I'm going to summer school. And provide more of like a concrete orientation then, so.
Well, thank you. Thanks on the SOR.
For the last one that you talked about, for the SOR that was open to everyone, did anyone have to be turned away or could you accept everyone that was interested?
It was available to every student in Hudsonville. Yeah.
All right, ever, any other questions?
Just a comment. This is such critical work. I mean, we all know that you don't just, I mean, when we talk about academic achievement and academic performance and so on, it's this, and I'm speaking without turning, you have coached us. It's this multi-tier system of approach, right? And this is one of those things, it's a piece of the puzzle, but it's an important piece and it adds on to the other pieces that continues to be explored. So this is so valuable and such a great job by this team and by our teaching staff, so thank you.
I know there are parents that have thanked you. Maybe not a lot of students.
Our younger students have thanked us.
Those people that take their summers and are relaxed and you guys are working very hard. I know a lot of people are, besides just you, teachers, other staff, but thanks for your leadership on this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your effort.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have recognition of visitors and hearing of people present. And we don't have anyone that signed up to speak tonight. So we will move on to our action items, starting with our consent agenda. Board, you have a proposal for consent agenda items. Do we have a motion to approve? So move. Motion from Dawn, second.
Support.
Second from Nick. Any discussion of the consent agenda? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. I'm opposing, son. Consent agenda is passed. Moving on to our regular action item. First up, we have our high school business and English courses.
Mrs. Taylor's unable to be here this evening. However, the board has reviewed the courses in the last work session. We've had no recommendations or questions regarding those, so the recommendation is to approve. We see dates for some that have already been approved. These are to basically put a date on those that we can't find when they were approved. So this is for the business English. We are wrapping this up, which was a major task as of last year. I want to thank not only Mrs. Taylor, but Jan also in their office worked very hard and getting this thing together. So recommendations to approve those courses as presented to the board.
All right, so the board had time to review the current business and English courses as presented by Dr. Vanderjack. We have a motion to approve. So move. Motion from Dawn, second.
Support.
From, that was Andrew. Any discussion and questions? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
What's your thoughts? Next up.
Next up, we have a recommendation. The board did have a hearing for a request for reinstatement. Their request for reinstatement was to the board is the recommendation of the administration that the board does not approve the recommendation for reinstatement. I want to make that clear. If you vote yes, that means you agree that the student in question should not be reinstated. If you vote no, that means the student should be reinstated effective immediately. Let me say that again. So if you vote yes, that means you agree with our recommendation to not reinstate. No, means you do not. I will ask President Cooper to do a roll call both regarding the recommendation after you get a motion in a second, if you get a motion in a second.
All right. So following the special meeting and recommendation of Dr. Vanderjack, we have a motion for a decision.
So who?
Motion from Ken, second.
Second.
Second from Greg. Any questions for Dr. Vanderjack?
No questions, but I do want to thank you for such a thorough process and for the administration that participated, taking this very seriously, clearly caring about students. And the fact that our ultimate goal is to make sure that the student gets to a place of success in life.
Yes, and I was also thankful this was not an adversarial meeting at all. It was a very good meeting and I appreciate it.
All right, we will do a roll call. Mark Davis.
I vote to approve the recommendation.
Yes.
Yes.
You do? Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Barbara, say yes.
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 Great. Motion passes. Next up, we have our report items.
Can you talk about homecoming?
Oh, maybe, maybe a little bit. As a reminder, my name is Paxton Brechtin. I am the Hudsonville High School Student Representative. This week, we had the privilege, the high school had the privilege to host a new student breakfast Tuesday and Wednesday. Tuesday, we welcomed incoming freshmen, sophomore students, and then yesterday, the 11th. We hosted juniors, seniors, and exchange students. We got to welcome around 67 new students to the district, to the high school, and 12 exchange students from all several different countries. I actually had the privilege to attend both the days and had the chance to meet all the new students over breakfast and got to welcome them to the district. So it's amazing to see how our school's growing. And then the biggest event coming up is our high school homecoming. Student Council has already worked several weeks to put this on. So a decision was made that the theme will be Hollywood red carpet theme. The homecoming events include a full week leading up to dance on Saturday. They include spirit weeks. Spiritual weeks may include like twin days or stud doubles. So called stud double to fit our theme.
Stud what?
Stud double, which is similar to a twin day. So pick your favorites.
You didn't like my question about triplets, did you?
You could, I guess. If you really wanted to.
If you were, if you had, if you were.
If you had some scare, if you had some multiple scare. Um, we get the opportunity to advertise our spirit days with our assistant principals, so thank you for your participation. We get students and principals and we put that on our high school, our high school news. And we show the participation of different students and administrators, which is awesome. Our Power Puff game is on Tuesday. As always, the seniors, we hope for a win, but you never know, the juniors may surprise us. So that's a football game between junior and senior girls play football. It's always a blast. And then our busiest day is Friday. We begin the day with our spirit day, my personal favorite eagle out, so wear your best eagle deer. We host a pep assembly during the day for all of our students. During the assembly, we play ridiculous grade-wide spirit games. I heard rumors about something to do with pool models, but I'm still trying to figure that out. We announce our 2025 homecoming court at the assembly and then begin to prepare for the football game at night that Friday night. At the football game, we probably have one of the largest turnouts in the states for our student section, which is amazing to see all the students show up and support school, school spirit, and the football team. After the football game, our homecoming court is announced once again and our homecoming king and queen are nominated. And then finally, after an exhausting week and busy week full of festivities, our Saturday dance takes place, hosted at our high school north campus. It's at night to give students time to hang out with friends and go out to dinner with, whether that's with friends or dates. Students do all kinds of things that are for their most comfortable. And then homecoming court is announced one last time and the rest of the night is for the students. That is taking up most of our time at the high school for the next month. Any questions? Thank you. We didn't think it was time to ask questions. Yes, any questions?
Obviously, obviously Mr. Vander, if I did, I'd probably ask you about snowball.
Don't ask about snowball.
Not yet, not yet.
But it is encouraging. This will be the first homecoming pep assembly which all the kids can fit in the gym in a long time.
Yes.
In our range to the house.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, with a few more updates and then I'll put some building updates. We'll start right in a little chat.
Hello, thanks for having us here and listening to our building updates. We are very excited at All Word. As you know, we started in our new Bridges curriculum, our math curriculum. And while it has been a little overwhelming for all of our teachers to unpack all of the materials and set up number corner and get used to it and learn it as you're teaching to it, there is an incredible amount of excitement in our hallways where teachers are just excited about the level that their students are able to learn in the mathematicians. Or they're running across the hallway to their grade level partner like, what are you doing on your number corner? I'm doing it this way. Did you hear what this kid said? And just even though it's so much work, it's so exciting and the kids are catching on to it. And it's such a cool thing to see from grade level to grade level, the continuity between our number corner, our home connections. And you know, even with my kids, I've got one in first grade and one in fifth grade and we both do similar things and we can talk about it at the dinner table. And so I hope other families are able to have kind of that same experience. So really excited and thankful for all the work that was put into finding the Bridges curriculum and piloting the program and for approving it as well. We're also, we had two new hires this year at All Word. We had a new kindergarten teacher, a secondary teacher, and they are just, honestly, you guys, they're off the charts amazing. They have come right into their big mold teams and because they're so excited to have them, if you walk through our hallway, you would think that they are seasoned teachers. So thankful for our new teachers that we have at All Word. We are also getting ready for Fall Fest. It's our second annual Fall Fest at All Word. And it's put on by our PTC and we have it on the weekend and it's a free event for our families, music. And we have a nice clear that they create spooky nice clear with, which is very exciting. And this year, we are partnering with the Georgetown Township Fire Department to bring in a fire truck and we're going to do a pumpkin drop from their ladder. Do you have any questions on All Word?
Thank you. Next up, Mr. Chilak with the first one.
Yeah, just a few highlights from Forest Grove. So I think probably the team I've met with the most so far this year has been our child skating team. So it's made up of several folks, our itinerant staff, our MTSS academic specialist, PBI specialist, and our newest person is a mental health therapist. And so I just want to applaud our central office and our board for. And so I just want to applaud our central office and our board for approving that new position. When I left school today, she was meeting with a family after school already. And our child study team's been very busy preparing for new students arriving, making sure we're getting them in the right grade and all those important things, and then hitting the ground running with interventions. So I hope the kids with academic needs for sure. And even more exciting than that, though, is we start early at Forest Grove, the kids start at the homecoming. So their first opportunity to meet the eagle, it petrifies some of the older kids, but it's super exciting for the older kids. Comes up on October four as well. So we appreciate the high school sense, a bunch of crazy and enthusiastic, spirited people that come to each elementary school and do our little version of a pep assembly. And then that day at Forest Grove then turns into an afternoon of all-school community walk-up on, a big fundraiser for the year, and then we finish it off with a tailgate party at the stadium. So if you have an interest in coming to flip burgers and hot dogs with me, or you just want to come and eat some, you are welcome to join all the people from Forest Grove that will take over the parking lot.
Thanks, Mr. Gillette. Next up, Mr. Creed over at Ballard.
Yeah, thank you. A lot of highlights for us as well. Yes, or yeah, yesterday was our first secondary teacher team time. Early dismissal for our students, for our staff to get together. And this year we've been very intentional about allowing our teachers the autonomy now that we have walked through the inquiry cycle with our staff slowly last year. It was really powerful and cool to see our teachers connect. They've been asking for that time. And to walk around and see the amazing things that they were doing, teachers talking about assessment data already and how they're going to change instruction for the students that are struggling. It's just really impressive to see that happening this early in the year. And the time was super valuable for our team at Ballard. We also have our big academic collaborative team data dialogues coming up at the end of this month, where we dig into our fall diagnostic testing, our STAR results, and really make sure that we are meeting all of our kids' needs if they do need additional support. So we're looking forward to that. Like Mr. Gillette at Forest Grove, we are super excited for our Hudsonville High School super fans, cheerleaders, drum line, the whole kit kaboodle. They come over for our homecoming assembly on Friday, October fourth in the morning. We do ours ten thirty to eleven thirty, so we're excited to have them. They come, they fire up the crowd, and then they leave, and they leave the kids all. Great. And then lastly, we are looking forward to our new student scavenger hunt ice cream social that takes place tomorrow afternoon, and it's just a great way for our new students to feel welcome with a group of students and our counseling staff. So just a lot of great things happening this start year.
Thanks, Mr. Creed. Good weather for your ice cream day. Ask Mr. Schramsky to give an update on the high school.
Yeah, so Paxton sold, I was going to say, about the new student breakfast. We had the new student breakfast earlier this week, and it was really, it was amazing to see all these new students come from all over, as far as way as Alaska and Hawaii, and come to our school. It's in our cafeteria and just meet with the students that are in slick, which is student leaders initiating change. They also got to experience our new cafe that we have built that's finished. The robotic suite is finished, and it finally feels like this construction that we've been living in for the last four years is like kind of calming down a little bit. So it's nice to have all of our spaces finally open. And then yesterday we did have our first PLC time, our collaborative team time Wednesday, and it was just amazing to walk around the school and just see all of our collaborative teams meet and just talk about students learning and how they're learning, and to begin to look at the data. Some of them have already given formative assessments, and now they're looking at how the students are doing so they can change their instruction to really just increase our students' capacity to be learners. And something fun that we did on the very first day of school is we had a school-wide assembly. In our real house, the first time we could get all the students together, and we did a, before school started with our professional development with our teachers, we had a rock, paper, scissors contest between all of the teachers. And we had a teacher that won, Kristy Clausen, math teacher, great math teacher. And then on the first day of school, all of the students within their seminars had their own rock, paper, scissors competition. And so there was one winner from each seminar, and then in front of the whole school, all of those kids went against each other, until we had one person out of the two thousand kids that was the rock, paper, scissors champion, and we got them some coupons at the Eagle Cafe and like a little plaque that says rock, paper, scissors champion. And then in front of the whole school, the kid went against the teacher, and the teacher won. It was pretty awesome. It was pretty great. That was really fun, and the kids still got to talk about it today, like they want to do another one because they think they're up and will win.
Change your strategy.
Yeah, change your strategy. Yeah, yeah, so that was fun.
Thanks, Mr. Gillette. I will, I will say the talking to the young man from Hawaii about snow days. Because he's like, "What are you talking about?" And talking to the young man from Alaska, he's like, "What are you talking about?" We believe that's right. One from Hawaii, he's never seen snow. He never gets below sixty, he said, so I'm like, yeah, it's not like this. Just a, just a quick update from, for myself. Walking through, I know the curriculum department was pushing into buildings at the secondary level with the collaborative team time with the PLC time yesterday. I was at the high school, and there's, you know, every classroom you're walking by, watching, listening to teachers digging into this work to do everything they can to support their kids academically. We know they support them emotionally, but really academically, it's just need to watch the importance of this work. So thanks to our staff, thanks to our leaders, and thanks to all of you for what you do. So that's my, thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Dr. Vanderjack. All right, we will finish with a board roundtable, and I'll start with our Mr. Mark Davis, who's newly returned from Greece.
Nice to be home. I went to a delightful program today at the Hudsonville Biker Library, and it was interesting to me because we had probably fifty or sixty of our Hudsonville students there. The speaker was Blake Harms, who is a meteorologist from Channel Eight Wood TV, Hudsonville graduate. And when he was in school here in Hudsonville, he had his own program for predicting snow days. But a delightful young man, a beautiful program, you would have all enjoyed hearing him, and then you got him.
That was it, thank you.
That was it.
I'm kind of bummed Amy isn't here because I just wanted to thank her for being so persistent on focusing on getting those dates on every class that we currently teach.
I mean, that's a challenge, and to stick with it.
So yes, Amy, if you're listening to this, thank you. Otherwise, Miller, special thanks for that.
I just wanted to say thank you again to the summer learning presentation. You make it look so easy, but there are hours and hours and hours of planning that goes behind it. And it's not like you had just one program. You have like five different ones. So thank you. It's great work.
Is this the first year we've done the new students welcome?
We do some form of it each year, the breakfast or different social.
Okay, so we have done this multiple years.
It's the first time in this cafeteria. We used to do it in the kind of big entrance of the north campus.
Okay, okay. I just had me call the way you talked about it, but thank you for doing that. I mean, that's, I mean, we all know that students are just continuing to learn and certainly, especially the junior students and so forth, so thank you.
Breakfast helps.
I ran right through that half. Luncher's gone twice.
Thanks for the work. Again, I know we said this about the situation up at the north side, and that's a big difference. For the north side, I can't, I'll be discreet. Thank you all for what you do to start up this school year in a great way. We appreciate all of you.
All right, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move that.
Motion from Mark, second. Yes, second from Dawn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye.